This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the meeting. The Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. We will be meeting at the annual library. First item on today's agenda is the consent agenda. They are taking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Malavika. There are seconds.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Although it's in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Public with comment. Seeing and hearing no one. Next item on the agenda is reports. First item is friends. Laura is out of town, so do you have anything to say for the friends?
The, well, their, yeah, their most recent meeting was canceled due to a lack of form.
Yeah.
So they didn't take any action. I think they're looking to set a date for their annual meeting. I don't think that is yet set yet as a case. So, and then the campaign committees continue to work. Tracy Hittson on two grant applications, one this morning and one last Thursday, for a total of $115,000, so we're having a good cost for those. And the committee continues to work on that.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Amy. Next committee report is finance. Anything to report, Amy?
Well, if you look at the budget recap, it appears like more or less everything is running on schedule. I mean, a few things appear to be, like, building maintenance appears to be high, but that's, I'm sure, is just simply a timing situation when bills are paid. So here we get to the end of the year, we'll be fine.
Thank you, John. Personnel committee?
If we have anything new, anything to report.
Thank you. And Lucy, Malavika?
I just got the date to share with you all if you would like to do the backpack, backpacking, which is probably March 7th. And they have three times available. And we can either, I mean, we can either go individually if we would like, but they're also willing to create a group, it says, like, you know, Davenport Public. So like, we enroll as a Davenport Public group and go under. So if you would like to go, and the times are, the first one is 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. The second one is 10:30 AM to 12:30. And I think the third is 1:00 to 3:00, but let me be 100% sure about everyone.
Oh, Riverbend.
I'm sorry. Yes, the Riverbend Food Bank at Kimmel Drive on the premises. And we are also inquiring, and this is not as the library per se, but just to share with you as we've gone there in the past, we're also inquiring with them if they could, I mean, if they allow to put some kind of information regarding census in those backpacks. So the little ones would get, and mommies and daddies would also, you know, maybe lead in just an extra exposure. So 7th of March, Saturday.
Malavika? Correct the report, Amy?
So other than what's in the report, we'll go back over the, some of the detail on the cost estimates later on in the meeting. If you've been following along on the expected arrival time of the outreach vehicle, you'll notice it's not going to.
Outreach vehicle and the Bible is.
This latest delay was, I think, kind of particularly discouraging because we had just had a meeting and Brittany had been sharing all the prep work she's doing for, and she had a meeting with parks and all the places we'd go with it and all the great plans. We were really excited and then we heard that we weren't going to get until the year. A couple of things. So the, in terms of census, we're also going to be working with the Complete Census Committee for Davenport. And we have some staff that volunteered in responding to requests from Mary McGinnis to create some really big numbers that can walk along in the census parade or in the St. Patrick's Day parade in the census entry. So they'll be talking that. And then something else that we're going to be looking at doing, what Malavika mentioned, Riverbend Food Bank, we're going to apply to be one of their partner agencies to see if they will be willing to then, or like, have a way for us to receive snack food so we can provide an after-school snack to the kids in particular that come to Fairmont after school. So working on that particular thing as well. So that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Is there any questions that kind of often all related to what you were talking about? But I have to ask, on the, the listing of payments from the electronic center, there was one item on there that said it was text to librarian.
So we have a text librarian service. So you can send a text to the number that's published and ask a question there.
On your website, then?
The link is on the, it's on the app for sure. It's probably in the mobile website, too. But the library app is currently non-existent. We're transitioning to a new app, so.
I think it was on the website somewhere, like, you know, you guys were more on the library. I forget the name of the button, but yeah, I think it's seated there or somewhere.
Yeah, it's probably the most useful, I think, in the mobile app. So the new app will hopefully be coming. I think they should be done baby testing last. I heard they were getting ready to publish it.
Thanks, interesting. Okay, council leaders on?
Yes, I'm sorry I couldn't be with you today, but thanks for letting me phone in. I'm getting ready for a census shoot today and I got a pre-cooked food for it. You don't see the result. Some things never leave you, you know, in your old jobs. In any case, in any case, I don't have much to report today. I do want to thank Amy for offering with the numbers because, you know, it'll be fun, I think. And of course, the idea is we count, right? Numbers, rrr. So in any case, so we hope to have, and if anybody would like to join us for the parade, please let me know, I'll get you the details. It is, it starts at 11:30 and you have to be there 45 minutes in advance. And we're going to do the whole Rock Island-Davenport route. So carrying our banners and, you know, making fools of ourselves. So that's what you do, right? So anyway, that's happening. I did want to let you know that the city council is moving into, it finishes budget meetings, of course, and that will be voted on in coming months or coming weeks. And it has to be per Iowa code. And what we're, we are starting also a deep dive back into flood, the long-term flood plan. And that was, you know, part of, going to be part of the process. We're actually having a, there is a meeting, a council meeting on Saturday, Saturday morning's work session. We'll have a, start with a presentation of what the efforts have been to date, you know, with the, with the plans for, the immediate plans for flood protection, what the negotiations with Canadian Pacific, you know, sort of all the moving parts at the riverfront because not all aldermen have been involved in all of those discussions. And we have new aldermen who haven't been involved in any of them. And so, and we'll start with that, but then we'll move forward. We are not trying as a council to develop the riverfront plan. That would be foolish because we don't have that expertise. But I think what we're going to be looking at certainly is an RFP for sending something out for a company who can then, you know, look at and devise a plan because we found that the riverfront is very complicated. I don't know if that, if any of this is ever appropriate. So I think flooding will be in the conversation again this spring. I don't know if this is any kind of interest, subject area for library patrons if they want to learn more about this process. There are some really interesting things from Public Works that really looks at the riverfront and breaks it into four or five sections that really require different responses. And it's, it's, there's a PowerPoint and things like that. But I don't know if that's appropriate for a library. But, you know, people are, seem to, you know, get passionate about the riverfront, you know, however they feel, whether it's, we need more protection or people saying, we don't want to flood other people. Or, you know, maybe it's a bigger question about, you know, what's happening along the Mississippi. But I just put that out there because it's, I think it is interesting to people. So, you know, otherwise, it's pretty much business as usual. And so that's, that's kind of where we are today.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, moving on to new business. Discussion of the library circulation policy.
Which is part of our ongoing, first keep all of our policies up to date. Give us a chance to take a look at everything. We try to do that so everything gets reviewed once every three years. And so this policy really just outlines the services that we provide and who and what their residency requirements are in terms of being able to receive library services. And I checked with Brittany in outreach to see if she thought we needed to make any changes just based on having the vehicle soon. And she didn't, she didn't see anything. She thought that we were pretty well covering that. And I don't know that we're making any particular recommendations for changes at this point. This is a really broad policy. Some other libraries in Iowa have very, very detailed policies that include how much they charge for fines and, and all those kinds of things. And a number of years ago, the trustees made the decision to have those be more procedural. So in case you're wondering about that, that's, that's why it probably looks a little bit broad. And I will point out the fact that it's, for a long time, the Davenport Public Library has been the home library for anybody living on Arsenale Island. So that's, that's been a place for a long period of time.
How does the Iowa Open Access Program work?
Iowa Open Access is a program through the state library that, so if we, any library that signs up as a participating open access library, we agree to provide library services to any cardholder of any public library in Iowa or, or any participating library in Iowa. So every, I would say probably 99% of libraries participate in this. And then we keep track of how many items we lend to somebody who's not within our service area. So they come into our facility, it's not anything we can send out. So they come into our facility, somebody from, at Elders, well, Elders that works there in that consortium, but say Iowa City, and check out items. We report those numbers in total to the state and then we get reimbursement through the state library.
So is the reimbursement for the transportation of the materials?
It's just for resource sharing, you know, to encourage people to share what they have.
How do you return materials to, like, somebody from Des Moines checks out books or whatever from Davenport?
If they return to the Des Moines library, then they'll mail them back. Or nowadays, since they're the statewide courier that this, the state library is funding, they would send it through the courier.
And the interstate borrower agreement with Illinois, is that where they can come, say, Rock Island patrons can come to the Davenport Public Library and get a library card?
Right, so they have to, and Steph is here, so she can correct me if I'm wrong because she knows. So they have to show a valid library card from their home, from their home library in Illinois. And then, I don't know that this happens all the time, but the staff is supposed to call that library and make sure that that card is in good standing. So, so we're not running into a situation where the, so say a Rock Island Public Library patron, you know, might owe them a couple hundred dollars in unreturned materials. And then, so they can't use their library anymore and they can't use any holy or any of those because they know that. So then they come and they, they want to get an interstate card so they can check out from Davenport. So we try to avoid that particular situation by calling to make sure the cards are good standing.
Maybe if I might, if I might share, if we say, I went to Rock Island Library two years ago on the other side and I wanted to, I had to be there every Saturday, Saturday. So I went to Rock Island Library, I said, can I get a library card? And they showed, I showed them my Davenport Public Library card. They didn't call in front of me, you know, they didn't call. And, and I have the same privileges if I go to Rock Island, any of those Rock Island libraries for that matter. And because of my, because my email is with them, I get their newsletter in the email, but I get all the privileges just as I get, but they did call in front of me and they asked, you know. So, yeah, I used, I did use that for a while. I also have a question, Steve. Amy, I just, this is just for my knowledge, I did not know. The, it says institutional card, like institutional sense, like, Ambrose, let's say. I mean, I know this is a very odd, it won't be Ambrose, but let's say John Deere or Genesis. Genesis. Is that what the card would be, like Genesis?
Yeah, so Genesis wanted, yeah, to have a card.
That, that's what it would be, an institutional card.
Right.
They can help.
Yeah, the thingy.
For this work? Malavika?
There's a form to fill out for an institutional card. But it's, you know, like, sometimes, some small businesses sometimes, you know, are looking for that. I think we've had attorney's offices or, but, you know, so if you're a small business and you're in Davenport and you want to have a card, if it's an institutional card, not a personal card.
So it's an official, and again, this is just for my knowledge. Like, you know, let's say it's a, it's a babysitting service, but they are registered. I mean.
As a business?
As a business. I mean, would they be eligible under, like, you know, maybe the service wants to have media reading? Like, they should come to a library, you know, but they have a reading thing, like, every afternoon they have a reading session. Can they apply if it's a eligible business, right? They can.
Right, yeah, so they can either apply as a business or, or as, you know, an individual. You know, so if you're, if you run a daycare in the city limits of Davenport, you'd be able to, you'd be able to get a card, a personal card anyhow. But if you want to apply and have an institutional card because you want to send employees down or whatever to get things. And that way, the business is liable for any items not returned as he was. Thanks.
This may be similar to Craig's question, but from any, if, when presented, the Davenport Public Library will honor a valid borrower's card from any public library? So somebody here from Kalispell, Wyoming? I got a look.
True. Yeah.
Kalispell's in Montana.
One ten.
Oh, thank. I should know that, you know, every night, know that, know of the places.
That's where my wife, my wife is at the hospital when she broke her leg. At the top of the mountain of Glacier National. Oh, yes, okay.
We've got a number of snowbirds, you know, in particular, who like that. So folks who live most of the time now in Arizona, Florida, New Mexico, warmer climes, you know, if they're home for the summer, they can, they can get a card. They're visiting for the summer, sometimes they're visiting grandkids or, you know, kids for six, eight weeks and they'll think they can get a library card.
Okay, so there's this nationwide understanding that library books get mailed back if they get turned in from another.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had, had a machine with that. Mostly, mostly folks who want that and take advantage of that are really dedicated library users and they're, they get everything back.
Something comes to mind though now when we're talking about, you know, yes, we have, I mean, the service that we have through this. Like, you know, let's, and I know it's still going to be time for Viking going to dock their boats by here. And, you know, I, what, I mean, I'm just thinking hypothetically, like, you know, they come onboard. And normally I've heard that they come down to the city, they visit the city, they go to public libraries if there is, I mean, the passengers, the visitors, I mean. Because Wi-Fi is expensive on the shipping, they come to public libraries and use a public libraries. And I'm just thinking, again, it's hypothetical, like, if, and they are from US, they're from sometime in the United States. Like, would they, I mean, would, I'm thinking, would they request borrowing? Like, you know, they see a book and they want to borrow that book. I mean, how would, that, we can't refuse them.
That's what this covers.
Yeah.
Okay, the last one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You're right. But they could, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it's just the way he calls different. It's the, it's the boat that they have, because I was thinking in a different pattern. It's just the boat that, that's the, the measure of transport, is, you know.
Maybe, maybe something that would come on a train.
That is true, I want that twist.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did.
Is there any other discussion on the circulation policy?
Well, the.
This is just discussing today, but they. We'll move it down for next month.
Okay, so it'll be, it'll show up next month where we all actually.
For action. Okay, thank you. Besides, I wanted to get right to the bylaw.
I'll sue it.
So, okay, I mean, so when we, when we last addressed the, when we last addressed this report, are you okay with everything except Article 2, Section 1, Section 2 that talks about the public with comment? And so I proposed some changes to that, which I sent you. And then I had a comment from Mary McGinnis, which was a good one, saying that she thought it really shouldn't say something in here, or she suggested maybe it should say something in here that when people, non-board members who want to address the board, where that would happen. So it might, you know, say something like, non-board members who wish to address the board may do so during the public with comment section of the agenda. And I think that's a one thing to include, but.
If I might say, if I might say, I think it would, I think it would make it clear that public with comment can't just comment anywhere they want in the meeting. So it's, and you have that on your agenda and it's early in. And so it, it might, you know, you know, stop some issues later if someone thought they could comment at any time. Just a thought, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, appreciate that. But anyway, as I, as I looked at this, the longer I looked at it, after I sent it out, the longer I thought about it. But anyway, I started to kind of draw a line between bylaws, policies, and procedures. And I looked up in Webster, what bylaws, what the definition of that is, and it says, "A rule adopted by an organization chiefly for the government of its members and regulation of its affairs." So in looking at the rest of the bylaws, I think they generally talk more about actions of this board or, you know, how we run our meetings or things like that, which then made me think that some of what's in here may be more policy matter. We don't have a policy for this, but maybe we should take some of the details out of here. In which case, oh, maybe it says, you know, "All meetings of the board are open to the public who wish to observe. Non-board members who wish to address the board may do so during the public with comment portion of the meeting or agenda." And then, as far as how they would register for that, if you will, or sign up for it, that and how much speaking time they have and the details about how it would be handled, including the loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language wouldn't be tolerated. Maybe that part of it should go to a policy and then pick up from there with bylaws saying that in order to remain in compliance with the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the board will not respond to any item out of the agenda. However, the board president may include the item on the following month's agenda. So it's talking more about things as far as governance of the board. And then also had a comment from Malavika about as far as people wishing to make it known they want to speak at a meeting, that there probably should be something in there how they do that, like a phone number or email address. And that's a good point. In fact, I looked in the Davenport School Board and theirs, they have, you know, to contact the board secretary at this email address or this phone number. So, and then I did inquire of Amanda about the, the part about the loud, threatening, personal, abusive language, thinking that maybe sound more policy. And if, if these bylaws are to address how the board does things that maybe that, I didn't want that to reflect on us, you know, that we wouldn't be loud. So I guess I wanted to throw that out and, and, you know, kind of share the misery of all the. But, but, no, to see, see what you thought about that, maybe we should have a policy on public comment and take some of these other more detailed items out of here.
Well, I wrote back on that post this morning, so you probably didn't see it. You did see it, okay. So, I mean, I was just asked about loud and threatening. I hadn't really thought about taking all these other portions out. So as I was reading and I was like, well, if we're going to do that, a lot of these things seem like policy since they're not really indicative of how we are going to comport ourselves. Well, part of the bylaws, I think it said, said something about, you know, for how we're going to proceed generally to help us with.
"Government of its members."
What was the end of it, though? And the regulation of its affairs. I mean, this is kind of how we're running our meetings. So, I mean, I don't see a huge issue with leaving it in there, but I think if we're going to pull it out, then we need to probably pull all these little parts out and just leave it to what we, the board, are doing. However, I mean, it's saying speaking times not to exceed five minutes, meaning we have the power to stop them after five minutes. So it's also kind of how we are going to run it. So even though it's saying loud, threatening, personal, abusive language isn't tolerated and that doesn't seem like an action by the board, it's, I mean, I think you could also add, the board has reserves, the right to terminate the speaking time of anyone who engages in such conduct. You know, so it is still kind of reflecting on things that we are doing, responsibilities of us or rights of us. So I, I didn't see a huge issue with leaving that stuff in there.
Okay.
So you could leave it in, but you're sure you're working it a little bit?
So it's saying what the board has the right to do, right?
But in my opinion, I think it makes more sense to leave it here.
Okay.
Because I think more, most people would look upon the bylaws as being a higher authority than just a policy, even though they're virtually identical. So I, I just think, let's just leave it here.
Okay.
And I think the idea of the, the language part, I think that needs to be put in there. In today's environment, you have to have that. Because, you know, there are people that would always try to push the limits.
Okay. Any other comments? I think, I think what I will do then is suggest that we say perhaps non-members who wish to address the board. may do so.
Yeah.
Public with comment.
So you're not gonna require, ask them to let us know in advance?
Yes, I am. I'm just gonna start a new sentence so it doesn't get too long. Those wishing. Wish they, is there a central point of contact?
It's usually Casey. It's usually the board secretary.
Okay. Okay, that works.
You want to put a title in there instead?
Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna take out board president, library director, um, those willing, wishing, wishing. Must make the request known to the secretary prior to the start of the meeting.
Uh, do we want to keep that out of the bylaws in case that would change? I mean, like clicking on board secretary on the website for friends goes to me, I believe. We don't separate this out into a separate policy. Is there concern people won't be able to find this information, know where to find it? Well, you know, honestly, I mean, where, where people want, you know, somebody wants to, to address the board, usually they've been in contact with us and they have been unhappy with whatever resolution or answer, um, we've given them already. And, and we let them know that the, the next place that they can go would be to talk to the board trustees, so. But it doesn't always have to be complaint, right? It could just be someone who wants to comment, yeah.
Okay, and then, but perhaps also that could be something that could show up on the website from time to time, just to kind of advertise it.
That's true. And just, um, prior to the meeting, like, right before the meeting or like the day before, then that, they don't have to be on the agenda, right?
No, and I wanted to address that too, because I forgot to, when I sent out the email to do that. But, um, but yeah, I mean, if somebody got here before the meeting and said, yeah, I'd like to address the board, I mean.
So then why do you even have to go through that exercise? I mean, you could just show up at the meeting and say, I'd like to talk.
Okay, well, I guess maybe.
I mean, you know, true. I know the city council, that's basically, it's just, if you show up, you could talk. A school board, you're supposed to let them know in advance.
Yeah.
Just two different ways of doing it.
Well, um, yeah, and the way they, the reason that the school board, at least when I was on the board, there were two different things. One was if you wanted to be on the agenda, then you had to make advance notice. Otherwise, you.
Which makes sense.
And they had a sign up sheet and you signed up and then the secretary would give that to the board president and they would look at that and say, oh, we got 20 people want to talk, you get two minutes apiece. And we're only gonna, you know, until the time runs out.
Hopefully, we never run into that.
Yeah. But, um, so.
Okay. I mean, you know, I understand the advance notice if you wanted to be on the agenda. Because we have to publish the agenda 24 hours in advance, so.
Sure.
If you don't know, you can't be on the agenda.
Okay, well, yeah, and, um, so maybe to say those wishing to address the board must make their request known to the board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. I mean, that will allow that same thing as you usually hear. If you, if you, if you think that's okay. The part that was in here before that referred to being placed on the agenda, I wanted to explain that too and forgot to include it in my email when I was talking about why I did what I did. The reason I left that out was because it seemed to allow other people to control our agenda. If they just had to request and they could be on the agenda, um, I think we want to kind of at least have some control over that. And it.
I think you could put it in here, but, you know, just because somebody requests it, doesn't mean they get it.
Right. And it doesn't have to be on the agenda. If, you know, be on the following month's agenda, if somebody comes and talks to us.
Well, you know, that's at your discretion.
Right. We take a shot at this here. So the changes that made, um, the first sentence would remain the same. The second sentence would read, "Non-members who wish to address the board may do so during the public with comment section of the meeting. Those willing to address the board must make their request known to the board secretary prior to the start of the meeting." That's would remain unchanged.
Or going to the school district system requiring people to request.
Okay, well, it just, basically all they're doing is making it known.
As long as we know what we're doing, that's.
Well, it sounds like they could, they can do this right up to meeting time, which is different from the school board. No, no, the school board, uh, you, you, it's the same thing. You come into the meeting, you sign, you sign the, the, the list and then the list gets given to the board president. If there's one person, they get their five minutes. If it's, you know, 10 people, then they have to probably get two minutes apiece or something like that. I don't think if they got less than two minutes.
Steve, my recent encounter with school board was I had to fill out a form. Each individual fills up a form with their, with their name and not sign. And they give in brief, very brief, two lines what they want to talk about.
Yes, that was.
So, yes, so, and that's how, and then I had to go give it to the board secretary and she gave it to, and there were other people.
Yes.
And she gave it to the board president and that's how they call it. So I had to write in short.
Yeah, but this is at the beginning of the meeting.
That exactly, at the beginning of the meeting. Yes, yes.
Opened any other ideas, anybody has? Trying to throw something out. Any other questions, comment? So just once again, the changes, the second sentence would read, "Non-board members who wish to address the board may do so during the public with comment section of the meeting." Those wishing to address the board must make their request known to the board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Both the amended bylaws. Thank you. For a second. The amended bylaws. Any further discussion? They say you're hearing none. Hold those in favor of the motion. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're done with the bylaws until the next meeting. Okay. Next item is the library. Oh, thank you. The cost. Cost of update.
Yes, I wanted to just share with you, um, kind of where we are with the, um, the renovation project. We got the detailed costs from, like, from the architect. And then had a meeting with them where we said, wow, that's really a lot of money, let's not do that. And asked some questions about where there are less expensive ways of doing things and what those options might be. So the first number you see there underestimated cost is at the review meeting and then it's February 10th. Was after, um, maybe what they call value entering in terms of, um, looking for ways to reduce the costs. So a couple of the, the, the major things, major changes that we made to, to really save some costs were, we wanted to put in some movable partitions, um, along some of those spaces. That, if turns out, is hugely expensive, um, like $50,000 for one wall and 30 or 40 for the other.
Those glass.
Yes, yes. So we talked with them about, um, putting one panel up of kind of storefront glass, like what we have around the sorter. Just to, between a couple of columns to sort of define that space. Um, so that was.
Is this between like the teen area and the kids area?
This is really gonna be between the, the public computer area and the maker area. And then we're going to not put anything up where the new teen space will be and look at that as a future project. If we run into the actually good situation where we have so many teens in that space that the noise is becoming an issue. So, um, that's, it's kind of an isolated area anyhow, so, so we're hoping that that won't be a big issue for us. The exterior lighting, the way they had that planned, which is numbers, um, 34 to 37. There'd be some really large dollars there. I think it all came up to like a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And we're not gonna spend a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars doing exterior lighting in this building. $6,000 per fixture. So that was just really way, way more than number one than what the original estimate was, which was $20,000. So they, so, um, this shows them just doing the, um, the lighting at the front of the building. What we've asked them to do is to go find a different fixture, um, for us. So, so that one will continue to change. The quantities for the, um, for the painting, the paint seemed really expensive, so they, um, line item 43, paint interior wall, a hundred and five thousand dollars. So they went back and they relooked at quantities and adjusted some of those prices as well. So, um, yeah, so we, so we have done, um, I think a fairly good job reducing some of those costs. We are still going to need to look for some additional cost savings. As I, I don't know that we're going to manage our $1.9 million fundraising pool. I think it's more likely that we're gonna have about 1.5, um, available to spend. So, um, so we're looking at what some of our options are there. As I was doing on this over the weekend, it did occur to me that on owner costs, item 74, um, those funds are already encumbered. So that's, um, you can pull that out of what we need for fundraising. Um, that's from the city money that we've received. So, um, so just kind of, um, this is, I guess, more of an FYI. So once we are really at, at the final stages of it, the trustees will need to approve, um, exactly, you know, what we're going to do as we put this together. I just wanted to keep you up to date on that.
What is, uh, item?
Yeah, that was, um, we asked about that, because, you know, to my mind, moving that from the area that's not gonna be the, the new teen space, it's just on the wall there into the back hallway that's like, you know, 15 feet, how hard could it be? And then they said that given the age of the system, that they might find that they have to pull a lot of new wiring for it and that would be what would jump up that cost. So, um, so that given, we decided that we could move some shelving around in that room and just leave it the way it is. It's locked anyhow. So it's not something that we would need to worry about somebody getting their hands on and, you know, pulling alarm. The, the alarm poles are a different thing, so.
A question. When we started this whole project, didn't, I'm trying to remember, didn't we, uh, obligate part of the, the, uh, library fund money, our levy fund money?
Yes.
I'm trying to remember how much was that that we.
$250,000.
Okay. You know, it seems to me that, um, you know, I appreciate the work that was done here to engineer the value, the cost down. And I, I realize you, you obviously are still working on that number. But if we get down to the point where it's, you know, 1,750,000 and, and the friends are able to come up with 1.5 million, including the 250 that we're already putting in. It would seem to me that we could obligate another 200, because there's still money left in the library fund. Fund balance. So I mean, you know, we could obligate that, you know, to get to the point where we fund the whole project. Because that library fund money is all on the, that's in taxes for the library, so.
Friends have any other unrestricted dollars?
They are, um, I talked to Laura a little bit about it, um, you know, given her professional employment as an investment manager. You know, where did, what, what would she feel comfortable with? Um, and so their, the friends are taking a look at that. And they have another, they have the, um, I always forget the name of it, Casey, the patron benefactor fund of about a something thousand dollars that, um, I think they're gonna be willing to, to put to the project as well. So, um, so I think, so I think Laura, yeah, so they're gonna be, um, looking at that. I, but I think that, I think that total with that, I mean, I don't, we're at $700,000 for the actual fundraising right now. So, um, so I think it's, it's gonna take the, the levy, some levy reserve money and some of these other funds to get us to the 1.5. It's just, it's a tough environment out there right now. There's a, there's a lot of competition, um, for those, for those dollars.
Some time YMCA.
That's probably, probably the biggest one.
Did you guys put any, she said you just did two grants earlier today, but that was not for.
That's for this, yes, that's for this project, yeah. That was to, um, the Carver Foundation and then to US Bank.
RDA or SCRA?
Um, they've already funded, SCRA funded the 240,000 and RDA 150, yeah.
Have you received all your SCRA already?
No, no.
Still, because you're on like the.
Three, three year, I think it was, yeah. So we'll keep you up to date, um, when we do that and at some point in time, we'll probably be, again, coming back to the, to the board for authorization to spend some additional funds and, and some of the other accounts that have built up over the years that we have.
Are there any funds or, or building that would cross over to some of the items that are on here? Meaning like some of the updates with wiring and, and any of the other accounts that we use for maintenance?
If you, if you turn your, your budget page over to the miscellaneous revenue expenses, um, you'll see that we've, um, built up a fair balance in the open access, access plus. You'll see that we've built up a fair balance in the open access, access plus. So there's some, some funding there we could use. We have some, some of these lyricists refund per cat refund, those are dollars that were refunded from deposit accounts. Quite a long number of years ago at this point, and so I think potentially some of that funding could. Could go to this, so I don't want to wipe out any of these accounts, see if they're nice cushions for us, you know, certainly. In uncertain budget times or, or whatever, but I think there's some, some opportunity there as well.
Be updated. In case some of the capital improvement that's available, right?
200.
Well.
So the, the city voted for $250,000 of capital improvement dollars in addition to, yeah. Yeah, that's where we encountered the architect fees from, so there is a, a balance left in that account that we can apply to the rest of the project as well. I think I was counting it twice, like. I was going to spend it twice and I didn't want to do that.
Should have been double. Any other questions on the cost estimates? Is still time for the presentation?
Think so.
A presentation on the impact of efforts to break down barriers to library.
There may definitely be exactly one or you have a few. Okay, I think we're good. So this is Steph Marvin, she is the supervisor of our customer services.
So part of the strategic plan is to figure out what barriers are keeping people from using, from using the library. And our department last year identified some of those barriers and we came up with some solutions and that's what I'm going to share with you today. So, um, this is our department, hopefully some of you recognize, we work at all three buildings at the front desk and we have served the patrons here at the library for a combined total of 149 years. So in, one of the biggest barriers that we identified was fines, that people accumulated fines, once you hit $5, you can't use your card until you have paid that down below $5. And some people just can't afford that, so we have several, we had several programs that we implemented throughout the year to help people with that. So our first one was last February, sweet forgiveness, was our first pay it forward fine event where we offered the activity for people to donate money to pay for other people's fines so that they could use the library again. And we had $221.95 donated, which we thought was a great start and, you know, we're doing it again right now and so. We also, again, to do with money, we, in the past, we've always charged $3 for replacement card if you've lost your card and your card has not expired yet. So we currently now offer free replacement library cards to people and so we feel like that has been really helpful. We've, to date, we've given out 552 free replacement cards and those, so those are, it's also saving the patrons time because then they don't have to come to the desk before they use the computer or check out. Oh, and feel free to ask questions, I should have said that in the beginning. We also had another fine program where people could read away your fines 15 minutes, you get a $1 waived. And during May last year, we had almost $400 in fines waived, which is almost $100 of reading. So we really wanted to encourage people to read and to clear up their fines before the, before summer readings so that they could check out again. This one isn't exactly a barrier for using the library, but it's a barrier for visiting some of the cultural institutions within our community. So for a long time, we've had community experience passes for the Figgy, the Putnam, German American Heritage Center, a couple of years ago, we added Symphony passes and Army. And then last year, we added Miami Zoo passes, which during their open season, we had 38 people use those, or 38 families use those passes. And then the Quad City Botanical Center, we just started offering those in November, we've already had 33 families use those. So we're really happy to be able to offer that to our patrons.
Yes, Steph, so a quick question, like if we have to check out an Ivy Zoo pass, like is there a limit, like, let's say I come on Monday, but I don't want to go to the weekend, like, is there?
You check it out for me, so you can use it any, I mean, you can use it multiple times during that week too.
So we know that people in general like Amazon Prime because they can download books, audio books, music, stream TV. And we realized, we offer all of those things for free and, but we also expect people to come in to get their library card before they are able to use those services. So we started offering digital cards, which allows people to apply for a library card online and they don't have to come in, we just email them their library card number and then they're able to use those resources. And we've already had 60 people sign up for that since June. This is my favorite thing that we're doing right now, it's an ongoing program where we, we thought about fines again and how teens a lot of times don't have money to pay for their own fines. The families might not have money to pay for their fines, so to get them to come back to the library. When they turn 13 or 18, during their birthday month, we forgive their fines and then we send them a card, which is what the picture is of. And we tell them that their fines are forgiven and we invite them to come back to the library. So far, since August, we've sent out 262 cards and around 15% of those kids have come back to the library to check out. And we're really happy about that number, especially in the teens. Yeah. I checked a couple of months ago and it was about 10%, then it was about 18% when I checked a couple of weeks ago, so I feel like we're.
Will you guys think about adding like 16 or anything, like another?
We could. We know that physically coming into the library to pick up your holds can be a barrier for some people, whether it's accessibility issues, they're in a hurry, their kid's in the back sleeping, whatever it is. And sometimes even finding a parking spot here at Main is a perceived barrier, I would say. So, so we started in September, opting for side delivery here at the Main Street Library. And we've had 36 people use the service in the last five months, perhaps if we had our board tax again, we'd have more people. I'm using that service, but we're hoping with more awareness that we'll get more people to use it.
I should, so, Stephanie, I should share, someone said the same thing to me, that it's so difficult, but Main is the best place to go, like in our park, I said, have you seen one?
Yeah.
And said, oh, do that, I said, yes.
So Stephanie, do that then, do you call ahead?
We have a separate cell phone that we have for it and then they just call our telephone number and then we'll just check out their hold swam and take much of our.
That's really cool.
Yeah, and we know that people use like Ivy, Target, Walmart, all those places.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll get more people to use that. Two more buying programs that we had, Foot for Fines, we've done for several years in conjunction with the Student Hunger Drive, last year we did it for two weeks, we collected 867 cans and we cleared $765 in fines. And we just had some donations too for people. And then we had one more pay it forward event around Thanksgiving where we collected $122.66.
Good for you.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't have to take the kids out.
We did talk about the digital, I've seen the digital. So if someone becomes a digital member, they cannot change out.
Well, they can come in.
But they also would come in and, you know, check out.
They don't have to show their ID, that's it. Okay, yeah, then they would just, we would just change it in the computer so they can check out.
Oh.
I mean, it's just, it's easy, right?
It is, it's not an ethical, but like, okay. So they can still check out a physical ID.
Yes, after they show their ID.
Okay.
No, they're picking up their holes. Yeah, I mean, I think sometimes. You just have to have an ID, well, you can do that online if you want, so, yeah.
Did you say this is at Eastern too?
It's not, we're hoping. This is just, we're still in our six month trial here.
Does Eastern have a travel?
Yeah.
Travel on it as a window.
Yes.
But you gotta go through that.
Okay, thank you.
It's tough, appreciate it. There's no other business to come before this.
Amy, there's another question.